Okay, thank you so much. I'm Stephanie Summer Odumis, President of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, and we will get to work. And our first item on the agenda is COVID-19 Comprehensive Update, Commissioner Kesterman.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner, for having me today. It's been two weeks since I've been before this commission, and all of the numbers continue to trend in the correct direction, which is excellent news. Today, we have about 6,700 active cases of COVID-19. When I was before you, two weeks ago, we were at 16,000. So we continue to make a lot of progress with our numbers and within our community. 6,700 cases, though, is still a fairly large number, so I continue to urge folks to be cautious until we see that number come down even more. Looking at this on a daily average, today, we are at 150 versus two weeks ago, we were at 309. So nearly half, or more than half, of where we were just a couple of weeks ago. I have really enjoyed seeing the lightening of this map. You can see the three, three, or about a month and a half period of time and where we are at today. All communities within Hamilton County have seen a significant reduction in the overall number of cases of COVID-19. With regards to our reproductive value, this morning, we are at 0.68 for Hamilton County, well below 1, which is excellent news. And for the region, we are at 0.69. And our percent positivity for the region, as well as Hamilton County, also continued to drop significantly. Today, we are at 6.4% percent positivity. So all really good metrics that way. Once again, turning to our hospital systems, we continue to see a lot of progress as well. All of these numbers are trending in the right direction. Our hospital systems have 332 people within them with COVID-19 compared to two weeks ago, 620. Our ICUs continue to have a decline as well. Today, we are at 75 versus 143. And ventilators, we have 59 individuals on ventilators today. Once again, it is worth pointing out, once someone makes it to the ICU, the chances of making it out alive are 50%. So one out of two of those individuals don't make it. And so COVID really does have an impact. And that, that is probably most easily seen on this graph, where you can see pretty consistently since late 2021, on average, about five individuals within our hospital, or have been dying within Hamilton County per day. There are even some days as high as 10 and 11. So really, still does have an impact within our community. The level of community transmission map put out by the CDC looks different today than it has in many months as well. You can see the entire northern half of the state has changed classification to substantial. And even Holmes County, the yellow county on the map, has now switched over to moderate spread. I get asked the question, as folks are really tired of COVID, about masks pretty often. And the CDC recommendation, as it stands today, is tied to the level of transmission. Holmes County, because they are moderate, are now no longer recommended in all public settings to wear masks like we are. So under the current CDC guidance, that is the threshold. Once we drop below 50, that recommendation decreases. So in Hamilton County, we are at 105 cases per 100,000. So we're getting there. That number continues to decline week after week. I also want to mention that there were several media outlets last week teasing about CDC changing guidance. I have no idea what that may look like or when that may come out, but it is supposed to come out sometime this week. So stay tuned to the news. We might see some new masking guidance regardless of what happens with the transmission map. Vaccinations, we continue to make a lot of efforts. At this point, essentially, everyone over the 30 age group has met the national standard of 70% vaccinated, which is excellent news as well. Lots of work to do. We are continuing to, to reach out and push that number up even higher, but we are pleased to see that our population has made that much progress. And lastly, a slide that you are very familiar with. If any folks in the community are looking for testing, testandprotectsinc.com continues to be updated. We continue to have a homebound team of nurses that are able to come to you if you have anybody that needs vaccination. That concludes my slides. I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of comments. Of course, we will be following the CDC guidelines as it relates to masking and looking forward to what they're gonna do in the future. But also, we have a state of emergency here in Hamilton County. We have, our, my colleagues have no intention of renewing that. As the numbers go down, we'll talk more about it. But it ends at the end of February, so. And then, Commissioner, there was some talk, when the pandemic first started, about herd immunity. And I'm just wondering where you are with that, because the numbers continue to go down. Are we anywhere near that? Or what would be your comments on that?
So the science continues to evolve. But what it looks like, and several folks that I have talked to in the medical profession seem to have similar thoughts. But, you know, we were experiencing the Omicron variant, which ran rampant throughout our community. We saw the case numbers explode. And probably, we didn't even see the tip of the iceberg for the number of people who did get sick from COVID-19 and the Omicron variant. Many more probably did get sick and just had minimal to no symptoms. I think that helps support the notion on why cases are plummeting so quickly. Many people in our community who have had COVID have some immunity to it. We know the vaccine works, and we know the vaccine works against many different types of these variants. And so we still encourage vaccination. But for those who have chosen not to get vaccinated, this has provided a temporary level of protection. And so it is my belief that, right now, we are enjoying some herd immunity from both the vaccine, as well as individuals who have gotten sick from Omicron.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Health Commissioner Kesterman. I had a question about people who had COVID and they survived. And I think I've read something where there was some talk, maybe, I think, the University of, not University, but UC Medical was opening up maybe a facility to help people? Because there are people who are still not, you know, their breathing is not 100%. They, there, there are some things that they suffered from COVID and are still with them. Have you gotten anything from CDC or heard anything locally? What's going on with that?
Yeah, so long COVID, as it were called, does exist. And we know that many of our hospital systems here in Hamilton County have set up long COVID clinics to help treat patients who have COVID who have not fully recovered. Unfortunately, you know, just like this pandemic started, we have a lot of knowledge still to learn. And so what those symptoms are and how long they last, whether it's memory loss, or persistent coughing, or loss of breath, all of those are symptoms of long COVID. And we're not sure how long those will stick around. So yes, it is something that here locally, we are looking into. Yes, the CDC has some information about it, but I think we continue to learn as we go. And I think also, each variant has potential to have slightly different symptomology for long COVID as well.
Okay. And are we keeping some data? I know that with your presentation and the Health Gap, some of the presentation was about, or some of the hesitancy with people was that there was not enough data in terms of long-term effects. Being public health, are we starting to kind of look at those kind of things? Keeping some data that we'll be able to maybe share at some point as it relates to people who got COVID? How it's affecting them? How it's affecting their healthcare cost? And then, so African-Americans that may have other symptoms? And how did this affect them in terms of the vaccination? Is the CDC or is public health collecting that data as well? That maybe we will be able to have something to share more with the public as we are going to continue to deal with public health even after COVID?
Yes, the CDC does have several publications. Once again, it's kind of an evolving science and learning, but they are studying the long-term effects, not only of COVID, but also any concerns folks may have along with the vaccine. But yes, that is being currently researched at the federal level.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
No questions, just a thanks, as always, to you and your team. We'll be looking forward to the new mask non-mandate, perhaps, here coming out soon. But, and just to be clear, so CDC will issue guidance, then ODH will then also issue guidance, and then you will issue guidance, and it'll kind of trickle down as we go.
So right now, I think ODH is pretty much aligned perfectly. And since it's guidance, both at the state, you know, the state's lost the ability for mandates, due in part to legislation. But as far as the recommendations for masks, it'll be pretty much just straight from the CDC.
Okay.
We'll start recommending, pretty much simultaneous.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you much, have a good afternoon.
Okay. We'll move on to our next item, which is Hamilton County Disparity Study Midterm Progress Report. Robert Bell, would you like to come up and introduce?
Robert Bell, Director of Economic Inclusion and Equity for Hamilton County. Thank you, Commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to present the Hamilton County Disparity Study Midterm Report, which is, which is, will be an update on the overall progress of the study. Just a general update on the study. As you know, this is the first-ever disparity study for Hamilton County. And it is, and it is an extensive and very comprehensive analysis of Hamilton County's record and awarding contracts, and is extremely important in determining whether there are significant, statistically significant disparities between small minority and women-owned businesses' availability and their use by Hamilton County, while attempting to control for neutral, race and gender neutral factors like company size, experience, and longevity. Only by finding the significant disparities can Hamilton County legally put into place narrowly tailored and targeted services and corrective actions that may be needed. So presenting today is Samir Bawa. He's Managing Director, BBC Research and Consulting. But also on the call are other members of our disparity team, who will be available to help answer if questions if needed. Stephanie Ayers, Associate of BBC Research and Consulting. Steve Love, SRL Consulting. And Gene Ellington of Ellington Management Services. So Samir, I can, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Excellent, thank you, Robert. Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay. I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing what's going on in the room, but hopefully, my sound is coming in pretty clear.
We hear you fine, thank you.
Great. I am going to share my screen, unless you have the slides in front of you.
We have the slides in front of us, but the screen would be good for those that are watching. Thank you.
Okay, well, good afternoon, everyone. As Robert mentioned, my name is Samir Bawa, and I'm the Managing Director with BBC Research and Consulting. And along with my partner Iris McClish, who's out on maternity leave, as well as Stephanie Ayers, who's one of our associates, we are conducting the 2022 Hamilton County Disparity Study. And in our presentation today, I want to give a relatively brief update on our progress, as well as next steps for the study. To begin, I want to very quickly go over our objectives for the project, which is, at its core, to study the degree to which minority and woman-owned businesses participate in both Hamilton County and Metropolitan Sewer District contracts and procurements relative to their availability for that work, and then assess whether any differences or disparities exist between those measures. The study also will provide a comprehensive set of quantitative and qualitative analyses of conditions in the local marketplace for minorities, women, and minority woman-owned businesses to assess whether any barriers or discrimination that exist in the larger marketplace make it more difficult for minority and woman-owned businesses to compete for and perform Hamilton County and MSD work. We will also provide a great deal of anecdotal information to provide insights regarding barriers and experiences of minority and woman-owned businesses in the marketplace to help better assess whether there are any barriers that carry over to Hamilton County or MSD's contracting processes. At the end of the study, we'll provide a great deal of recommendations regarding policy and program refinements that Hamilton County and MSD can make to better encourage participation of small businesses and minority and woman-owned businesses in that work. And then, everything we do will be towards an eye, with an eye towards legal compliance, ensuring that any decisions that Hamilton County and MSD make as a result of disparity study results are consistent with relevant case law, as well as federal, state, and local regulations. The most important regulation or legal consideration that the county and MSD must make is related to its potential use of any race or gender-based program measures. So any use of race or gender-based measures must be consistent with and meet the strict scrutiny standard of constitutional review. And that standard comes out of a 1989 Supreme Court ruling that says that any organization that uses such measures must meet both components of strict scrutiny. The first is showing a compelling interest for the use of such measures. And the second is ensuring that the use of any race or gender-based measures are narrowly tailored to meet the specific objectives of any such programs. So in terms of showing a compelling interest, that just means that the county and MSD must show that there is discrimination that exists in the marketplace that justifies the establishment of any race or gender-based program measures. And then, in terms of narrow tailoring, there are several components of narrow tailoring to ensure that any program measures that Hamilton County uses or MSD uses that's based on race or gender must be targeted to meet the objectives of a program. So that means that both organizations have to show that the use of such measures are necessary beyond race and gender neutral measures, that they are limited to those groups that actually show evidence of discrimination in the marketplace and as part of Hamilton County's or MSD's contracting processes, that the use of such measures is flexible and limited in duration. So they can't carry on forever. They have to have some sort of sunset provisions. And in addition, they can't be mandatory, or, they can't be mandatory. They have to be flexible in the sense that there has to be some sort of mechanism where prime contractors, who are trying to meet contract goals, for example, have other ways to meet those requirements without using quotas or something like that for race, for minority or woman-owned businesses. Any race or gender-based measures have to be rationally related to conditions in the local marketplace. And then, the use of such measures also have to account for any potential impacts on third parties. So they can't be overly burdensome on non-minority or woman-owned businesses. So we've made a great deal of progress to date in conducting the disparity study, beginning with data collection. So all of our analyses are, are based on an immense amount of data collection, both from the county and MSD themselves, as well as through primary research that our team conducts by way of surveys, interviews, focus groups, and a variety of other research methods as well. So to begin the process, we collected an extensive amount of data on construction, professional services, and goods and other services contracts and procurements that both Hamilton County and MSD awarded during a five-and-a-half-year study period, going from 2016 through 2021. It included both prime contracts and subcontractors and information on the vendors that actually perform that work. We worked with both organizations over the course of several months to make sure that we compiled that information appropriately and represented it accurately so that we can conduct our core analyses, which we'll conduct nearer the end of the study. So as part of that process, we collected information on more than 500, on more than $540 million worth of county contracts and procurements, as well as more than 1.4, excuse me, about $1.4 billion of MSD work. The majority of those contracting dollars were in construction, but we also had substantial dollars in professional services, as well as goods and other services. And we have about $125 million that we're still working to classify in one of those three categories. Yeah, if you bear with me for just one second, there we go. As part of the process, we also established the relevant geographic market area for the study, which is the geographical location that is the basis and the focus of our analyses. So based on where prime contractors and subcontractors come from to actually perform Hamilton County and MSD work, we established the relevant geography for the study as a seven-county area, which includes Hamilton County, Butler County, Warren County, and Claremont County in Ohio, and Boone County, Kenton County, and Campbell County in northern Kentucky. In terms of the dollars that both Hamilton County and MSD spend, the vast majority of their dollars go to businesses that have locations in one of those seven counties. So more than 90% of the dollars are accounted for for businesses who are located within our seven-county relevant geographic market area. And that will now be the focus of our core analyses as the disparity study continues. We've also done a great deal of community engagement to date to engage meaningfully with business owners and other stakeholders throughout the marketplace. We began the disparity study with public meetings to introduce the study, answer questions about our project team, about our methodology and our objectives. And then importantly, also give attendees the opportunity to submit any insights or comments they have about barriers that exist in the marketplace. We don't have any other public meetings scheduled as part of the process, but we do have a number of other methods in which we're engaging with the community, including in-depth interviews, where we sit down for one to two hours with business owners to understand their unique experiences in the marketplace. To date, we've conducted 17 of those interviews with our subconsultants, our local subconsultants, and we will conduct 23 more for a total of 40 interviews by the end of the process. At the end of this month, we'll be conducting focus groups with trade association representatives to better understand experiences of their members working in the marketplace. And we'll integrate that information, along with all the other evidence we collect, both anecdotal and quantitative. As part of our availability analysis, to assess the percentage of dollars we'd expect minority and woman-owned businesses to receive on Hamilton County and MSD work, we base that in large part on what we call availability surveys. We have conducted more than 600 of those surveys with businesses out in the marketplace to date. We anticipate that we'll conduct more than 200 of those in the coming month for a total that would near about 1,000 completed surveys. And in total, that represents survey attempts with more than 8,000 businesses throughout the marketplace by the end of the study process. As part of our utilization survey, where we calculate the percentage of dollars that actually went to minority and woman-owned businesses during our five-and-a-half-year study period, we also base those on surveys as well. We will begin our utilization survey process in the coming months. We anticipate that we will conduct utilization surveys with more than 600 businesses as part of the disparity study, and then augment that information with additional research via the internet, via certification lists, and other data sources so that we can establish key characteristics of the businesses that actually perform the work on county and MSD contracts during the study period, most notably, the race, ethnicity, and gender of their owners. We're still collecting anecdotal comments throughout the process as part of our community engagement process. We just want to share this email address, in case you could share that as well and sort of disseminate information about our study more broadly. So the community can reach us at HamiltonCountyDisparity@bbcresearch.com. They're free to ask us questions, which we'll be happy to respond to, but also submit any comments or insights they have about working in our local marketplace. Potential topics that they might share include experiences with discrimination, any barriers that exist in the marketplace to success, any issues they've had with payment or prompt payment, their experiences working in either the private or public sector, their experiences working as prime contractors or subcontractors, and then, any experiences or barriers they've had working with either the county or MSD. And as I mentioned earlier, any information they submit will be integrated into our analyses as part of the disparity study, and will provide a broader perspective on what might be going on in the region and what might, what barriers might exist that make it more difficult for businesses to compete for work with either Hamilton County or MSD. We have also made great progress in conducting econometric analyses around conditions in the local marketplace so that we can identify any barriers that exist in key business outcomes that make it more difficult for minority and woman-owned businesses to compete for or perform work for Hamilton County or MSD. This goes a long way in helping Hamilton County and MSD establish a compelling governmental interest for any race or gender-based measures that they might choose to use in the future. Our analyses focus on four key areas. So human capital, the acquisition of experience or opportunities for advancement in key or relevant industries as part of the disparity study. Any barriers in financial capital, so whether minorities, women, and minority and woman-owned businesses have difficulties accessing loans, bonding, or insurance. Any barriers in business ownership, so do minorities and women own businesses at the same rate as comparable non-Hispanic white men? And then, business success. Do minority and woman-owned businesses enjoy the same levels of success as comparable businesses owned by non-Hispanic white men? We base those analyses on United States Census Bureau and other existing data. And then, we conduct our own econometric analyses on those, including regression analyses and a variety of other analyses that allow us to statistically control for race and gender neutral factors so that we can assess the independent relationship between the race, ethnicity, and gender of business owners and various business outcomes. Those analyses are also tailored specifically to the relevant geography for the study, and they're tailored specifically to the product markets that are the focus of the disparity study and that are most relevant to Hamilton County and MSD contracting and procurement. In the larger packet we submitted for the Commissioners' meeting, we submitted some slides on preliminary results of those analyses. Just in the spirit of time, I won't go over those now, but I would urge you to take a look at those so you at least get a sense of some of the high-level analyses we conduct to, to explain some of the barriers that exist in the larger marketplace for minorities, women, and minority and woman-owned businesses. In terms of next steps, we are about at the halfway point of the study. We anticipate that we will complete the study in June of 2022. As part of that process, we'll be continuing working closely with both Hamilton County and MSD, providing them with progress updates and information about preliminary results and so forth. We will also be providing updates to the disparity study webpage, which is hosted on Hamilton County's website, which provides information about our progress on the study, information about our objectives and the progress and the project team itself. As I mentioned, we'll be conducting focus groups at the end of this month with trade association representatives. Those will be led by Stephanie Ayers, as well as our subconsultants. We'll continue to conduct in-depth interviews through the end of April. We'll be conducting a legal analysis and developing a legal framework for the study, which will describe the strict scrutiny standard, provide an overview of other legal standards that race and gender-based programs must adhere to, as well as relevant case law. We anticipate that we'll be working on the legal framework through the end of the study process, and that'll be included as part of the final disparity study report. We are collecting subcontract data directly from prime contractors. So we're in the midst of doing that now, and we anticipate that that process will go through the end of March. We'll also continue to conduct availability surveys through the end of the March, end of March into the beginning of April. We'll then be in position to conduct our availability analysis, which will provide estimate of the percentage of dollars we'd expect minority and woman-owned businesses to receive on Hamilton County and MSD work. And that will go through almost the end of the study. We'll conduct utilization surveys in the spring through March and April, followed by the utilization analysis, which will provide calculations of the percentage of dollars that minority and woman-owned businesses actually received on Hamilton County and MSD work during our five-and-a-half-year study period. And that will be regardless of whether they've made the decision to become certified as minority business enterprises, woman business enterprises, or any other disadvantaged business certification. We'll then conduct the disparity analysis, which will be designed to compare actual participation to availability, and we'll conduct that in the late spring, early summer. We have been in the process of reviewing the policies and programs that Hamilton County and MSD use to award contracts and procurements to help identify any areas that and MSD use to award contracts and procurements to help identify any areas that either the county or MSD could make refinements to to better encourage participation of minority and women-owned businesses moving forward. We'll be developing recommendations through the spring and early summer, and those will also be included as part of the disparity study report. And then throughout this year, really going back to 2021, we have been drafting sections of the disparity study report, and we anticipate we'll have a full draft of the report by the end of May 2022. And then based on any revisions from the county or MSD, we will finalize the report and make final presentations, we expect, in the first half of June of 2022. Thank you for giving us the time today, and now I want to open up to any questions that the commissioners may have.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, I think the commissioners did not get the market analysis slides, so I'll make sure you get that right afterwards, because he sent in a new slide because he didn't think he had much time to get through it. But I think that's how we got mixed up with it. I'll make sure you get that. It's just about three slides. It's just general statements on the market condition.
And they can't hear you in the back, the sign language people.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the commissioners do not have the market condition slides because we cut it down because of time, and he thought he needed, he didn't have enough time to get through it. So we'll make sure the commissioners get that right after the meeting. I apologize for that.
Okay.
They also can't hear your questions from the mic and stuff. We have some problems with the mics. So if we're going to have Bridget put your questions in the chat for them to see, and so you can ask us, me and them, you know, questions that you have, and, you know, they'll see it and I'll hear it.
Okay. Thank you so much, and I thank him for his presentation and the team that's working with him. I have several questions, and it probably would be fair to address them to you, Mr. Bell. I kept hearing MSD, 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 and that was confusing to me because there are other departments that we were supposed to be looking at for, and I'm not saying we're not, for disparity as it relates to purchasing and procurement. MSD was the last to come on board. They didn't want to do it because they said they were involved in one with the city of Cincinnati, so they finally did come on. And then MSD, we have really no, we own MSD, but we, the management component of it, the procurement and purchasing, we don't have a lot to do with it other than some approval. So I'm just a little surprised that MSD took the forefront on this. And so, and they are the biggest entity. And I guess my question is, why do we, first of all, take them first, take the biggest, the most massive group? Because that's why we're looking at the executive administration that exists now with MSD, and maybe the fact that the board needs to look at having more control over this entity. So for those that are listening, I think it's good for them to know what other departments are involved, and they were indicating, and I'm not, Bridget, I'm not thinking you're going to get all this, but they're indicating by June, you know, they would have this done. But what about the other departments, the smaller ones that were so willing to be a part of this? And then we grabbed the biggest one of all that we have no control over. So I guess my thought was, and I'm going to, you can answer in a minute, but my thought was, why don't we take the ones that were willing? Why don't we take the smaller ones that we can immediately make some changes? So maybe you can answer some of that.
Yeah, Commissioner, good question, good question. We did take, we've taken all the BOCC departments, all of them, and we have a number of elected offices. The only elected offices that we don't have is about three of them. But the other ones came in and are part of it. So we have just the large majority of all of the offices and departments in Hamilton County.
But you never mentioned anybody but MSD.
Well, because they're the largest, that's the reason why.
So can you name the other ones that they're going to be working on as it relates? And all the information, the surveys and all that was MSD stuff.
It's facilities, administration, it's stadiums, it's communications, it's job and family services, which is a large one. It's all the BOCC departments that are under the BOCC. We got those first.
You already got those?
Yeah, yeah, we had those first.
No, I mean, you've already conducted the surveys and...
They've got, they've got majority of the data already collected on all of them.
Well, they didn't mention anybody but MSD.
They didn't lay it out by departments that way. The only reason they did MSD is because they are, they are larger, even their total money is larger than the total of all the rest of us combined.
So when we look at the schedule of next steps and when they plan on being completed, it would be for all of those other departments?
All of those other departments.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Definitely in there, I'm sorry. We, I think we need to amend that and make sure we say that.
Yeah.
And even list all the departments in the presentation.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear, yeah, for sure. Thank you. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for that clarity, because I think that's important. I want to highlight a couple things for those who are watching, that I want to start from a place of, my premise is there can be no taxation without participation. And we were getting quarterly reports, we no longer get quarterly, I'm going to make a recommendation and a request, rather, not recommendation, request that the administration, we go back, Mr. Bell, and I want to thank you, back to the quarterly reports. Because once we see these quarterly reports, we are seeing that we have taxation, meaning we collect taxes from diverse people, without participation. I remember when I first got elected, I saw the fourth quarter report, and that was just the fourth quarter. And the two stadiums that we own, that the taxpayers own, we had sixteen million dollars in upkeep, and only fourteen hundred dollars went to minority businesses. And this is the kind of stuff that has to be in the disparity study to show the disparity. Now, it is a shame, and it's not any of our fault, but it is a shame that people that look like, like me, women, other minorities, they have to go through all of this to prove that they are a minority-owned business. But on tax day, they are equal, and then unequal on every other day. And we do collect taxes here. So I think that in the disparity study, I'd like to see some narrative showcasing the tax positioning, the taxes that we collect from diverse small businesses when it's time for the IRS and our tax folks, the state tax folks to show up. We don't have to prove we're a woman, we don't have to prove we're a minority, we don't have to prove anything. They say you are in business and you owe us money. So I'd like to see something in the narrative from the taxation position, and then once people see that, they'll understand why unfortunately we had to have a disparity study. Right now, the disparity study is our biggest contract with a minority business. That's a shame, that the study is more than what we spent with actual businesses that actually have to pay us taxes. I do appreciate the time scheduled, and I'm asking that it can be as quick as possible because every week, we have to vote on millions of dollars. We got a one billion dollar budget, and every week, we got millions for this jobs. And I'm glad you answered the question of our Madam President on the fact of what she said, make sure jobs of family services and all that, because they spend a lot of money, and every week, we're voting on this stuff. And we've got to make sure that there has to be real, real opportunity, because again, we're charging everyone taxes. If you go on to page five of the proposal, I think it's very important, I don't want to run over that page. If you look at the county, the total that you looked at preliminary dollars, if you will, almost a half a billion, over a half a billion dollars. Then if you add MSD, you got 1.4 billion dollars. And these dollars are happening with the absence of minority businesses. So that's taxation without participation. The thing that was said earlier, I want to highlight this for folks, and it really, it bothers me, and I hate that we have to move in this direction. The presenter, and I appreciate his presentation, he says that this has to be a narrow focus. So we're putting a lot of money out for the study, but it's not forever. He used the words that there'll have to be a sunset. That means it's an end date. So once we find out about the disparities, that we come out with something, and we finally can get some inclusion, there will be a sunset, there will be an end date. He said it cannot be going on forever. It also cannot be overly burdensome to non-minority businesses. Thought that was interesting. We also must be flexible. Now, I have a problem with these terms, because when you go into business, and my parents have been in business for over forty years, you got to pay every time. Ain't no sunset. As long as you in business, we collecting. And then the fact that at the county, we have people who have lifetime contracts, I want that to be looked into in this study. How can they have lifetime contracts? But then minority businesses, this program would have to have a sunset, meaning an end date. It cannot be forever, is what he said. But we've got contracts that are forever. So I want to have that in the narrative, I want that looked into. How can that happen? For example, on the banks, they've got lifetime contracts. But in here, if we do a disparity and we want to have some inclusion, it has a sunset, an end date. I got a problem with that. I want to look into that, since you got the legal people, look into that in this disparity study. I've had, this is my fifth disparity study, that's why I want to get it right this time. I don't want to have to keep running into disparity studies. I want to be, I want to figure out, how do we put this in our DNA? I also want to look at non-bid contracts. I want that included in the narrative. How much of this half a billion dollars is no bid contracts? I like that in the final report. Under professional services, which is a high area where minority business, women-owned businesses are, professional service is seventy-four point two million dollars that we spent. But then if we go to MSD, and Madam President is right, we've got to make some changes over at MSD because they got 1.4 billion dollars and got a whole lot of disparity going on. Professional services, they got four hundred and ninety-three million dollars that you've looked at for a professional service. That don't even include the goods and services. Those are your consultants. Most of the time, we're left out when it comes to consultants, because we're not looked upon as experts. So when you go to goods and services, we had a hundred and sixty-seven point five million dollars on goods and services. MSD is lower than us on goods and services. They had one point, one hundred and twenty-one million dollars. Then we got a thing called unclassified, and I'd like to know what that is. What is the unclassified? I like it labeled, what kind of, or could you tell us? What is that?
They're still, they're still working that out. They're not going to leave that there.
Okay.
Those are just the dollars that they still have to put in one of those categories.
Okay. But that's a lot of money, seventy, but they say it's a whole lot of money, seventy-nine point four million dollars unclassified.
Right, right, but they're going to put those in categories.
And we'll get categories. Okay, good, I'm anxious to see what those categories are. Those are some of the areas that I want to see included. In the total spend, I want to look at minorities broken down, from a business perspective, how much do they pay in taxes? And then I want to know from a consumer perspective, how much do they pay in taxes to Hamilton County? So we could get a real good look on we're being taxed, but when it comes to contracts, we being axed. I want to look at that. And then the last thing he mentioned was prompt pay, which I'm very excited about. That obviously would have to come through our payment system. When I was at the city going through the disparity and leading the Small Business Committee, I came with a law called prompt pay law. It was one of the top barriers for small businesses, no matter what your race is. We took forever paying small, small businesses cannot carry payroll, cannot carry debt, they got to pay the people right away. And I don't know if we're working with the other departments, if we are, I want to make sure that prompt pay is on the table. It's a way that they can borrow, you can borrow against the contract. If they know that Hamilton County or Cincinnati has prompt pay, they can go to the bank, borrow against the contract, get the working capital off the contract itself, because they know that they will be paid guaranteed in ninety days or what have you. It really helps small businesses, and they don't have to put up everything, they house and they key its future just to get a contract. So if you could look at those other departments and how prompt pay could be helpful. Financial capital, I want to know what, if you're going to look into this category, what entities have been good to minority businesses and what ones that have not? Why do we want that? Because we have to vote every so many years, along with our treasurer, on where we put the people's money. And we want to put our money in banks that are in turn fair and loaning and providing access to capital to our citizens and to our small businesses. And we don't want to vote for somebody to take our people's money and then turn around and lock the people out. So this will be very helpful, since you are looking at the financial capital component in your, in one of your slides. I'd like to have analysis on who's doing it right, and if there's some people doing it wrong, we'd like to know too, as we have to make these decisions. We want that money to turn two or three, at least three times before it leaves Hamilton County, and the financial component is very important. So those are my things. I look forward to the full study, but these are the things that I'd like to have added to the final document so that we can hopefully put it in our DNA. If we put it in our DNA, then we don't have to worry about sunset, because it's just who we are. If we put it in our DNA, we don't have to worry about locking people out, because it's who that we are. This disparity should be a beginning of putting it in the DNA, so we don't have to come in here and spend half a million dollars every so many years to say what we already know that people have been locked out. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert, and thank you to the panelists. They cannot hear our questions, is that correct?
Not very well.
Okay. All right. So a couple of the things I was going to ask or have been touched upon, and I just do want to say that, you know, I am very interested to see the completed project or process here. We've been engaged in this process for a while and looking forward to doing better as a county as we move forward, because we'll have the disparity study completed. So I just have two, I'm going to limit what I'm saying just because they can't hear me, so I don't know how relevant it is. But the one issue that, on page three, under the narrow tailoring, I too had questions about the idea that we be flexible and limited in duration. I feel like we need more clarity about what exactly that means, and I heard the gentleman speak to it, but I'm still unclear as to what this category means.
Can, so were you able to hear the Commissioner? You want to speak on that? You have to unmute.
Dr. Khan, let me bring up the presentation again, and I can clear up questions on strict scrutiny. So let me be very clear from the start. These are the implications of what comes out of Supreme, the Supreme Court's rulings on race and gender-based programs. So I'm happy to walk through and provide details, but this originally came out of a case that the Supreme Court heard in nineteen eighty-nine called Crowson versus the City of Richmond. And essentially, the city of Richmond had contracting goals for minority-owned businesses, for black-owned businesses in particular, and it wasn't really based on any analysis. It was rather, it was based on the population percentage of black Americans that lived in Richmond at the time, which was, I believe, around thirty percent. So the city of Richmond applied thirty percent goals to a construction contract, and a white-owned firm lost that contract and sued, and it went all the way up to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court, which was a conservative court at the time, ruled in favor of the white contractor and said that the city of Richmond's program was unconstitutional, and like other race-based programs, it should need the strict scrutiny standard, which it did not. So the strict scrutiny standard has two components. One is showing a compelling... One is showing a compelling governmental interest. And as I mentioned, that is just establishing that there is evidence of discrimination in the marketplace and that discrimination could potentially impact outcomes for minority and woman-owned businesses trying to work for the organization itself. So the rules around showing a compelling governmental interest is that an organization has to show that discrimination exists in its own contracting marketplace. It can't rely on national statistics or national information and that that discrimination has some potential impact on the types of contracts and procurements that it's awarding. In addition, any race or gender-based measures, like minority and woman-owned business contract goals, which Hamilton County does not currently use, nor does MSD, have to be narrowly tailored to meet the objectives of the organization, the diversity objectives or the supplier diversity objectives of the organization. So here's where those five components of narrow tailoring come into, come into play. Number one, the organization has to show that it's tried to use race and gender neutral measures over some period of time, and those have been insufficient to, to address any disparities or barriers that might exist in their contracting. Number two, those measures have to be limited to those groups for which there is evidence or inferences of discrimination. So for example, if part of the disparity study, if we show substantial disparities for black Americans, Hispanic Americans, but not for Native Americans or Asian Americans, then any race or gender-based measures should be and have to be limited to black Americans and Hispanic Americans. They can't be overly broad to include groups for which there aren't, there isn't any evidence of discrimination, just as an example. The third component of narrow tailoring is that the use of race and gender-based measures have to be flexible. This usually shows up in the form of good faith efforts processes. So for example, a prime contractor who's bidding on a contract that has a minority-owned business goal on it, has to either meet that goal through partnerships or subcontract agreements with minority-owned businesses or show that they made meaningful and genuine good faith efforts in meeting that goal, but for whatever reason couldn't do so. So they have to document those efforts. But those have to be treated the same. Otherwise, the program, a goals program quickly devolves into a quotas program and that is unconstitutional except under very extreme circumstances and would likely lose a challenge in court. They also have to be limited in duration. That doesn't mean that, a sunset provision doesn't mean that a program like this goes extinct after some time, time period, but it does mean that you can't use the same information forever. You have to reassess your program after some number of years, usually it's something like five years, and make sure that the information on which you're basing your program is still up to date and reflects the marketplace at the current time. Any race or gender-based measures have to be rationally related to the marketplace. So the City of Richmond is a good example where they applied goals to contracts, but it wasn't really related to the availability of minority and woman-owned businesses. It was actually, it was actually related to population statistics. And the Supreme Court has been pretty clear that population statistics aren't the same thing as the availability of businesses actually working in these industries. So any goals that you use just can't be plucked out of thin air, but rather have to be related to some analyses around the marketplace. And the disparity study will provide plenty of detailed information to be able to do that. And then finally, the use of race and gender-based measures have to account for any overly burdensome impacts on third parties. So for example, if it turns out prime contractors are meeting goals in such a way in only select industries, and that makes it more difficult or almost impossible for white-owned businesses to compete in those industries, that could be an issue of having, being overly burdensome on businesses that aren't minority or woman-owned. That's called over-concentration. And other issues that a program, a race or gender-based program, has to take into account as well. So all we're doing as part of the disparity study is not making up these rules, but rather looking at case law and importantly, looking at Supreme Court and federal court rulings and communicating as part of the disparity study and what those, what that case law says, what Supreme Court rulings say, and tailoring or helping Hamilton County and MSD tailor any race or gender-based measures to reduce risk. So to make decisions that are consistent with the legal framework around race and gender-based efforts and make sure that if they were to get challenged in the future because of any race or gender-based decisions that their, that their programs are using or their policies use, that those decisions are legally defensible.
Okay.
That's very, yeah, very helpful. Thank you for the clarification.
Of course.
I don't, I know we were trying to get through that quickly, but I think the detailed clarification on those words is very helpful.
Very, very.
I just got one last thing. So when you, under potential topics, and this has been mentioned as well, I just want to emphasize that sometimes there are things in place that aren't obviously discriminatory, but they are discriminatory. The payment method is one of them. You know, something else that we've encountered here is especially as we've worked through our small business program where we're helping small businesses with some of the federal dollars that we've received. Having listened to the community and those that are small business owners, especially African-American small business owners, we were told things like you can't do first come, first served because there's a disadvantage to a business that is not, doesn't have a relationship perhaps with the bank or doesn't have an accountant on board. And so some of these things, you know, I don't know that we would all think of that necessarily, but that's the case, you know? And so we've learned. The other one was when we learned that if we didn't include sole proprietors, we would not capture as many African-American business owners as otherwise because so many of them are sole proprietors, just by the nature of what they're doing. So these are things that are not, I think, as obvious, but also really important to the work that we're doing to make sure that we look at all those kinds of things that influence the policies that we're going to make or the study that we're conducting here. So I just want to kind of emphasize some of these things because I think they've been learnings as we've gone through, especially the small business piece with the federal dollars and really learned from some of the small businesses and minority-owned and women-owned businesses that, you know, it's not, it's not a blatant thing. It's just that, you know, if you're not going to include sole proprietorships, you're not going to get the target. You're not going to hit the target. So I just want to emphasize that I am hoping we're looking kind of broadly and letting others inform how we approach some of these things throughout, throughout the study.
And Commissioner, I'd just like to comment on that because that's one of the things that you guys did with the second rounds and stuff like that. You went to the community and got feedback.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing with the anecdotal and statistical evidence in this whole study to get that kind of information from, we're talking to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of minority businesses and other businesses to get that kind of information on how can we do things better? What are the problems? What are the issues? And that's going to be all part of the report.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner.
I just wanted to add two things. On the lawsuit part, lawsuits can go both ways. We had the NAACP, Joe Mallory, and at that time, the Urban League, they had great concern about our report. So, you know, there could be a lawsuit, like you said, if you, I guess if you do too much, but there could be a lawsuit of people saying, I'm getting, I'm paying taxes and we can't participate. And in that third quarter report of 2021, for example, we have Hamilton County Jazza Family Services, one point six million, thirty-two thousand was spent in that third quarter. Zero with S, zero with MBEs and WBE was only a hundred and thirty dollars. Total spend for all of the groups that we looked at was about four million, over four million dollars. SBE spend was only five thousand eight hundred dollars. MBE spend was only a hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And then our SBE, our WBE spend, women-owned businesses, was only fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And so my point is, you know, these numbers are startling and I understand we've got to have some disparity studies that it's no fault of yours, but I want to be on record. I don't want to be spending five hundred thousand every five years and we got these kind of numbers just to include people. We're putting in more money on the disparity study than we're getting for the minority businesses. So what I want to look at is how do we make the mindset? Because we got procurement, we got people procure, we got no bid contracts, we got low-hanging fruit that's under the threshold. How do we start to change that mindset? And I want to look at the disparity study to start having relationships with other businesses where we open up the process, where now these businesses have a track record. They've done business with us. They know how to do business with us and they can do those kind of things. My last thing, though, is put on the agenda that we are a reimbursement place. That makes it very difficult for a small business if we have contracts that require us. And I see when they do small business contracts, it's like a book. It's almost big as the Bible with a whole lot of warehouses. But when I see like a port authority, millions is maybe two pages. We've got to look at how do we incorporate them, but maybe not on the, just reimbursement only. That's very tough for a small business to get a million-dollar contract, for example, and say, you own a reimbursable. The contract says up to a million dollars and then all you can do is get reimbursed. So maybe we can see what other counties or other cities are doing, but I know that that is a major burden for any small business, I don't care what your race is, to try to carry that for a long period of time. So that's all that I have for that. This is the issue, obviously, all three of us are really into, and I've done a lot of work in this. And if I believe if the, if the state could go past, I think we were at one point three percent and could go up to past fifteen percent, sixteen percent, I know we can do it here at the county.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. And just lastly, for me, the numbers that were indicated, some of the numbers that were given out from the board is indicative of the lack of diversity and inclusion in some departments. And that's why this is our first disparity study, much needed. And hopefully, we will find out exactly how we need to make changes systemically in this process. So thank you so much.
Madam President?
Uh huh.
If I could just, a couple of things that just wanted to clarify through the presentation. Number one, back on the issue of MSD, I just want, and for people, I know the board is aware of this, but just for people who may be watching at home, that MSD is, was included under the county's disparity study for a specific reason. We'd had, there was actually a disparity study going on at the city simultaneously. The county is doing its own. And so there was, there was a question because MSD was kind of being left out. They were falling through the cracks. And the question was, we need to pull them under one of these efforts. So the question, we talked with the city about which, whether it would be included under the county study or under the city study. Ultimately, it was determined that because MSD by law has to follow county procurement law, that it would be more effective and actually legally better to include it under the county study. So I just wanted to make sure if people, to your point, Madam President, if people had wondered, well, the City of Cincinnati operates MSD, why wouldn't it be included under theirs? For people at home, they do have to follow county procurement law, which makes it more practical for them to be under the county's disparity study. Also, just wanted to note, I think I heard Samir correctly in terms of the, the next steps. So for folks who are online, have the presentation, the dollars that were shown, the five hundred and forty-two million and the one point four billion, that is the universe of dollars under these entities. This is not a reflection of disparity at this point in time. That disparity analysis is to come later. So I just want to make sure that people who see the presentation don't look at that as a reflection on disparity. So that's it, Madam President. Just wanted to clarify a couple of those items.
Thank you. And so Jeff, are you saying that MSD is not involved with the city at all in their survey?
They are not involved, to my knowledge, at all with the City of Cincinnati's disparity study craft.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for listening.
Thanks, Robert.
For listening to our presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the panelists.
Thank you all for being on Zoom with us and we appreciate the work that you're doing. See you later. Maybe they can't hear us now. You never know. Okay. Let's move on to item number three. Cardinal Land Conservancy's Clean Ohio Conservation Grant Application. Steve Johns.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Steve Johns, Assistant Director of Hamilton County Planning and Development. And there's a lot of things that happen in our county that sometimes we just don't know about, right? There's work that is happening in the background all the time, and this is one of those little things that it's fun to put a little spotlight on and it's perfect to do it here in front of the Board of County Commissioners. There's a little-known program called the Clean Ohio Program. Perhaps Vice President Reese, with her work at the state, might have known about that more. But it sends out funding for a variety of sources to do things like agricultural preservation, brownfield remediation, and one is green space preservation. And that's the program we're talking about today. About two million or so, a couple million dollars, come down from the state through that program every year to acquire green space in Hamilton County. Some of the places that you might be familiar with that have acquired it in the past, our Great Parks uses this program a fair bit, the Mill Creek Alliance with their work along the Mill Creek uses this program a fair bit, and the Cardinal Land Conservancy, who you'll hear about today, does a lot of work on this. We have a resolution drafted for you on your March third agenda in support of this application, so you'll see it come up then. For the details, I'm going to introduce Andy Dickerson. He's the Executive Director of the Cardinal Land Conservancy. And along with him is Tim Burke, also representing the Cardinal Land Conservancy. Andy, if you want to come up and show them about this project, I think they'll be interested to hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tim Burke. I'll take just a moment to introduce this a bit more. For the last forty-plus years, I've been involved with the Little Miami River and Little Miami Conservancy, which used to be Little Miami, Inc. In that effort, as you know, it's the first national scenic river in the state of Ohio. Little Miami, Inc., which operates much in the way that Cardinal Land Conservancy does, has been able to acquire over one hundred nature preserves along the river. And they were literally responsible for the creation of the Little Miami Trail, the first of its kind in the nation. That's the kind of work that Cardinal Land Conservancy also does. And three years ago, the county commissioners, joining with the City of Cincinnati, supported another grant application by Cardinal Land Conservancy that created a one hundred acre nature preserve at the mouth of the Little Miami River that also has what we believe to be the only existing and the first in perhaps as long as one hundred years bald eagle nest in the state of Ohio. And Andy's going to tell you how active that is today and explain to you what the current application is, that the city has already adopted a resolution in support of, and we hope the county commissioners will as well.
Thank you and thanks for having me today. I really appreciate giving me time on the agenda. So let's, let's go. I'll tell you a little bit about us and then about the project and we can get moving. So we're a land trust. When I was before you, three years ago, we've been growing. We work all over southwest Ohio and we have fifty easements that re-protect agricultural land and we own property outright, up to about eight different nature preserves. So altogether, about eight thousand acres. We are a nonprofit. We're a 501(c)(3). We are up to two hundred and thirty members, eleven people on our board, and we work throughout, throughout southwest and our offices are based out of Claremont County because it's centrally located, but we work all over southwest Ohio. We're up to four full-time staff and two part-time staff. And there's our mission. It's, it has to do with natural habitats, waterways, and productive lands. So that's the bulk of what we do as an organization. And here's what, what Tim was talking about. And the picture might be a little unclear, but I'm, you know, I've got it on my phone right now, if you could see it. We've got a, we were able to put a live stream webcam on our eagle nest down right next to Four Seasons Marina, where we have a hundred and twenty acre nature preserve. And they have two eggs right now. In each of the past three years, they've had three. So we're able to share this with the public and get people interested and engaged and get outside and check this place out. And it's in the city. Not, not too far in the city. It's in the east end. I actually had to prove to city council that it was in the city, so I'm at a county meeting, so you guys hopefully think that's funny. How this project came about? How this project came about, so where we're at is we have, and we're fortunate enough to work with the last family farm in the city of Cincinnati. It's the Bar Farm, and it's off of North Bend and Wenton Road. It's 32 acres, and the Bars with no heirs were trying to contemplate what's next with their lives and what's going on with their farm. They wanted to see it stay a farm forever. And they were generous enough to gift us the farm because we are in the forever business, and we'll take care of it. And we are a nationally accredited land trust. So we're set up and accredited through the Land Trust Alliance's Accreditation Commission to prove that we have the finances, governance, and policies in place to do that. So this project that we're talking about today is along Wenton Road, immediately adjacent to our Bar Farm. It's 20 acres, it's heavily wooded, it's got a creek running through it, and it's already got a mile trail on it that someone has maintained because Walter Schoolz owned it for 20 years, and they just haven't done much. So we're hoping to really take advantage of making this a green space and accessible to the public. And here, the map's a little rough to see, but the road at the top is North Bend, and the road on the right going up and down is Wenton Road. So it's, if I were to zoom out a little more, there's one property on the south between us and Spring Grove Cemetery, and that's the old Gray's Road landfill. So that's where this project is. As you're going up Wenton, you know, people, a lot of times, you've got your head down, you're driving, just trying to make it alive up Wenton Road because it seems like it's a speedway. But it's beautiful woods up there, and even me hiking it, I've seen fox and deer and coyote on that little place in the city. So for us, this project is unique. It's a great location, it's beautiful woods, it's adjacent to a farm that we're already protecting. We're working with Cincinnati Public Schools in their outside program. We're working with the community, and you know, that's one of the things that we're trying to do, is get more people outside. We lease the front six acres to a group called Our Harvest, and they produce local produce for people to purchase. And what we want to do is make this a project that we do with the community instead of to them. So if you were to ask me what we're doing, I can't tell you because we're not dictating it. So we're going to work with College Hill and residents and talk about what they'd like to see us do so we can try to do something that would try to engage people. And again, we want to keep this place open to the public. So in short, we're not seeking money, we're just seeking a resolution. This is part of the Ohio Revised Code. When we pursue this grant that was approved, had bipartisan support 20 years ago by the voters of Ohio, and for us to do it and where we're doing it, we are seeking a resolution of support from the city, and we need one from the county in order to apply. And that due date, I'm sorry to say, this is March 4th, so I'm thrilled to be on the agenda for March 3rd. So, and the other thing that we could use support when it comes time is pursuing a curb cut so we can improve parking and access for folks. So, welcome, any questions?
Thank you so much for all your presentations. Sounds like a very good operation, very busy and very, we need more green space, you know, we definitely do. And so you have a sample resolution that we can take a look at and get on our agenda to be able to pass. So we'll be able to do that. And so, and then you say no money needed, so that's a good thing, too. So it will certainly benefit those schoolchildren and the people in the area. I know exactly where that area is, not because I was hiking, no, I was driving. So anyway, but thank you for your presentation. I'll open it up for any comments, Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you, look forward to supporting this. You know, we hear a lot about Clean Ohio, and I'm always like, get the money back here, get it down here. So anytime we can bring more money and be able to provide for our area, certainly supportive, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. How much money is available right now through Clean Ohio?
So there's 19 districts across the state of Ohio, and each district is allocated approximately $2.2 million a year. And in Hamilton County, which is District 2, we're lucky enough that we have quite a few high-quality partners and players that can spend the money, so we have right around $2.2 million. Other districts around, one district north of us, it's four counties share the money. They have $5 million because the money's unspent. So we do support spending that money right here where the populace is and making sure it goes a long way and counts.
Okay, yeah, I'm a big fan of this project and this program, both on the green and the brown side, which we're now starting to see a little money roll in from the brown side as well, so that's good news. I was, one question for the board. We're bumping up against your deadline. Madam President, I don't know if it's possible, if we've considered just doing this resolution on Thursday?
Yeah, we certainly can, that's why I was asking about a sample.
That would be great.
Okay, I thought it was on our agenda for March, and I'm just wondering if we can get it in on Thursday, March 3rd?
It was on the agenda before you mentioned the urgency of having it done.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Well, these, it's funny, you know, funny in a way that's odd. In a nonprofit world, and when people get a notion to want to work with us and get a deal, I had an attorney call me today saying, we want to gift you an easement on 600 acres of ag land and creek, but we got to do it by next week. I'm like, oh, okay, let's see what we can do. So I'm sorry about the timeline, but it is what it is for us.
That's okay, thank you, we'll get it done.
All right, great.
Thank you so much for coming.
Madam President, I believe we have a resolution already, so we can bring it Thursday by leave, that's no problem.
Sure, okay, great, thanks. Okay, we have One Ohio MOU, Jeff Alouar, Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just going to provide the board with a brief overview, a high-level overview of the One Ohio MOU. This relates to the statewide opioid settlement. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of history on the damage that opioids have done throughout the nation and the community. I think that's probably well-known at this point, that's not the focal point of the presentation today. The presentation today is really designed to discuss the, one of the next steps in the One Ohio MOU legal settlement, which is the formation of a local regional foundation to control and direct some of the dollars that will be coming out of the state foundation that are part of this settlement. So Bridget, I don't have the clicker, would you mind? There you go, thank you. But just very briefly, for those who may be watching at home, we, you know, I think it's well-known the damage that opioids have caused in the community, not just here locally and in the state, but also nationally. Just a couple of facts for the presentation. Opioid overdoses killed over 23,000 Ohioans between 2010 and 2019. And in 2020 alone, over 68,000 Americans were killed due to opioid overdoses. So we know that this has had a tremendously negative impact in our communities. It has also spurred a lot of creative and effective policy responses throughout the country, including here in Hamilton County, between the county and many of our local political subdivisions, whether it is the quick response teams that originated up in Corrane Township, or the Addiction Response Council, previously known as the Heroin Coalition, that came together to bring multiple stakeholders together to battle the multifaceted dilemma that was the, that is the opioid crisis in America. So a lot of great policy responses, but today, my focus is more on the One Ohio MOU. Bridget? So in 2020, Ohio and local government signed on to the One Ohio MOU. This is the plan to pursue joint negotiations and litigation against the drug manufacturers and distributors. So again, not to go into depth on the legal side of things, but for those who may be watching at home who don't have the background, the complaints typically allege that the opioid distributors violated federal law by failing to aver, or failing to alert the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration of things like suspicious opioid purchases, orders of unusual size, frequency, or pattern, also that they exaggerated the benefits of the medication and knew that the drugs were being over-prescribed, yet failed to warn doctors about the extremely addictive nature of the narcotics and the need to strictly limit the dose. So a lot of information out there that you can find about the background on the litigation. But in essence, that is part of why the litigation was carried out nationally against these distributors and manufacturers. Bridget? So in August of 2021, Ohio entered into an $808 million settlement with the three largest distributors of opioids, Cardinal Health, McKesson, and AmerisourceBergen. 99% of Ohio political subdivisions involved with the litigation signed on to this settlement. And that becomes important because the settlement, while it was $808 million, the total amount that Ohio actually received depended upon the number of entities that signed off. And the fact that we've got 99% means that we will get close to that full 808 million. These dollars are to be paid out annually over 18 years. Under the terms of the settlement, there's to be a continual flow of dollars over 18 years. There were also some other more managerial administrative measures that were agreed to by the distributors as well, in terms of things like establishing a centralized, independent clearinghouse to provide all three distributors and regulators with aggregated data on where the drugs are going, how often, eliminating blind spots used by distributors, et cetera. I will say also that the 808 million was the settlement with these three manufacturers and distributors, and that there is additional litigation ongoing. And so we do have the possibility of some additional recoveries and distributions. Bridget? So the mechanism for distributing these settlement dollars, 15% of the settlement dollars under the One Ohio MOU goes to the Ohio Attorney General. 30% are to be directly provided to local governments in Ohio. Every local government in Ohio will get an annual allocation over these 18 years according to a formula and a percentage defined in the One Ohio MOU. With one qualification, especially if there's any local governments who might be watching this broadcast, if a local government's annual distribution is less than $500 or less, that allocation goes to the county. I think it's out of, from an efficiency perspective. And finally, 55% of the distribution will go to a state foundation for distribution to the regional foundations. And that's what we're really talking about today, is the regional foundation. But before we get into the foundation, I did also just want to hit very quickly, what can the funding be used for? This is not just a general allocation to local governments for a general fund purpose. These are dollars specifically to help respond to the opioid crisis and specifically for activities like prevention, treatment, recovery, criminal justice response, and public awareness. So as I indicated, there is a state foundation that was formed as well in the One Ohio settlement and MOU. That foundation includes 29 members. It will develop procedures for distributing the regional opioid funds, and local regions will make submissions to the state foundation to fund projects consistent with those eligible uses. For a regional foundation, there are 19 regional foundations in Ohio. Similar to our previous presentation, Hamilton County is its own region as District, or Region Number 2. It was, the regional foundations are created to determine how to use opioid funds and submit projects to the state foundation. This is not really a competitive-type thing. Every foundation, every regional foundation has an amount under the One Ohio MOU, which is allocated for it. So it's not like we are at risk of having our dollars cannibalized by another region. But nonetheless, we still have to submit projects in order to have those projects funded. Regional foundations will also appoint a local representative to the statewide foundation, which is important because we want to get someone up there as quickly as possible so that we have a voice at the table to ensure that as these processes and procedures are developed on how to distribute the funds, that we are there and active in that process. The whole mechanism for establishing a regional foundation and what it looks like, even down to how you appoint a member to the statewide foundation, was not prescribed in the One Ohio MOU. So it's largely being left to the local jurisdictions to figure out what the regional foundation looks like and how to go about appointing that state rep. But I will say again, as I indicated, there is some urgency to this because we want to get someone involved with this process at the state level as quickly as possible. Here is just a map of the regional breakdown. You can see Ohio, or I'm sorry, Hamilton County as Region Number 2, and you can see the breakdown of the other regions in the state. Next slide, Bridget, thank you. And here is the preliminary recommended regional foundation structure for Hamilton County. So, and I know there had been a communication that had been put out on this previously, so this just mirrors that. But for those who might be at home who can't see the PowerPoint, the regional foundation would prospectively include all three Hamilton County Commissioners, two appointees from the city of Cincinnati, the Hamilton County Coroner, the Hamilton County Health Commissioner, Cincinnati Health Commissioner, the Hamilton County Mental Health Recovery and Services Board President or CEO, Hamilton County Drug Court Judge, the Hamilton County Sheriff, Hamilton County EMA, a township trustee, a mayor, I put city/village, I think there might still be some discussion there, someone with lived experience, an educator, a mental health professional, a business leader, a faith leader, and a hospital representative. I think the concept was to have the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition serving as the non-voting advisory board for this group as well. So again, the idea was to have this as a wide-ranging stakeholder group to ensure that, to the degree possible, all points of view and the different facets of the opioid crisis were represented at the table. Bridget? And finally, I presented the same presentation to local governments this morning, requesting their feedback on this proposed structure. I think the idea is that over the next month, we would provide these local jurisdictions with a template resolution that they could pass and could send back to the county as support for this preliminary structure so that we can ultimately seat the foundation, and that foundation can make its recommendation on an appointment to the state foundation. Commissioners, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. But again, just wanted to make sure that the board had this information presented publicly, given the fact that we would be doing some work with our local governments over the next month. Happy to answer any questions, Madam President.
Mr. Administrator, as I look at the preliminary recommended regional foundation structure, I would just recommend that we add one additional for lived experience. It doesn't say one or two, but I'm assuming it's one because, and maybe one from the county, one from the city. Therefore, if, you know, one has to be out, we'll continue to have the expertise of someone who's lived that experience that doesn't happen to be able to be there that day. So I would like to increase that to one, certainly, we don't have to discuss it now, but if we could. Vice President Reese, any comments on this presentation?
No, I'm just interested in the timeline. I see that some of the things that I had mentioned are included, and I appreciate that, some of the village and township folks. But just want to know, once we do the MOU, is there a timeline on this, a deadline, per se?
There's no real deadline associated with it right now. I think as we've talked with the County Commissioners Association about it, they had put some things out wanting to have foundations formed by the end of, essentially, the end of February. But in discussion with them, I think that was a date that was added into some of their materials to express a sense of urgency. My understanding is that most of the regions are in the exact position that Hamilton County is right now. Some of this information just came out very recently. So I think if we do this over the next month and get the jurisdictions to sign on, we'll be either ahead of the curve or right in the midst of the curve. So I think from a timeline perspective, Commissioner, I think if we can get this done over the next month, we'd be in good shape.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, because, you know, when we want to get started, I guess a lot of people need help. And I know as we're, I guess, coming out of COVID, hopefully, but, you know, we didn't talk a lot about, we have a lot of people that did overdose and die. And so I know we want to get moving fast. And I do want to thank Commissioner Dreehouse for kind of leading this and helping put this part together and having some of the, obviously, some of the things that we also wanted included, that it's included in here. So looking forward to us kind of moving on forward because there's a lot of people out there that really do need help right now.
Thank you. Can I ask one additional question as we look at the regional breakdown? And so we have our own region, as you indicated, but Region 14 seems like it's just so many counties. Why such a large region, did they go by popular? Why such a large region? Did they go by, you know, by population? And so, all of those counties don't equal what we, yeah.
Yeah, it was done by population. Yeah, so some of them are multi-county, and some of the larger counties are their own districts. Yep.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Administrator, for outlining the process here and what we're trying to accomplish. I, too, share a sense of urgency about this, not only to get the dollars, once they're available, out into the community, but also to make sure that we have a representative sitting at the statewide foundation level, and we cannot appoint that person until this group is in place. And so, we do have some urgency here. So, one thing I wanted to note, the number, which we were trying to come up with an odd number for this group. And so, I, too, had a recommendation, actually, Commissioner Reese, it was related to something you had said early on. The appointing authority for the villages and cities is the municipal league. But the muni league has both cities and villages, and we have them with a village mayor. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't add a city, a small city mayor as well, just to expand the representation out into the other forty-eight jurisdictions, since the city of Cincinnati has two. So, it's something that I think might, I think that might be helpful, in addition to the township trustee. And then someone, you know, I think the more people with lived experience, the better, honestly. And I think HCR, the advisory group, will also help with that. We can add one there. But then we've got an odd number. So, I'm, maybe toy with this a little bit and see if maybe there's a way, or I mean, I don't know how, I don't feel like this is going to be a controversial board at all. I think there'll be consensus around all the recommendations. But let me figure out how to get us back to an odd number, and then maybe we'll refine this list to put, you know, make sure everyone has seen it in advance of anything that comes forward to us to pass, if that's all right.
Sounds good.
And then also, the six at the bottom, the lived experience and educator at all, we've circulated something. So, each office has an opportunity to name those individuals related to those categories. So, as we work through that, I'll look forward to getting that information from both of you. I figured it would be two, two, and two. Again, we'll have to adjust a little bit with that number, but we'll figure that out. So, look for that. And Jeff, what, as far as the timing for a resolution of the board?
So, we could, really, at the preference of the board, we could do it as soon as, we could do a resolution on the general structure as early as by leave this Thursday. If we wanted to take more time to get some of the things that were just discussed today, right, we could do that a little bit later on. If the board wanted to be more prescriptive about the membership on the board before it passed something on the structure, we could wait a little bit. I think we would certainly want to have it done by the time all the jurisdictions' resolutions start to come back. I just think that would be good form and a good look in terms of us being the ones asking the jurisdictions to do it, so.
Well, we could certainly pass a general resolution. My preference would be to have the names attached to the different areas, but that might take a little longer to do. But if we could attach the names, and I noticed on the highlighted sheet that we got to make recommendations, there are also some positions up above that that if you have any suggestions that were not highlighted, certainly can put those in. But we can do a general resolution and then have a timeline to get our names in. However, the preference of the board.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to add, too, on the, I know, question of villages and townships, but more importantly, too, what are those cities or municipalities that have had to deal with, you know, an uptick? I think that would be, you know, critical. I don't have that information. But if we do have it, maybe one of those cities or villages or what have you that have had a large amount of dealing with this, I think they should be at the table because we want to attack, obviously, those zip codes first, trying to stabilize those areas. So, I just wanted to add that. But I'm open to a generalized resolution to, so we could get moving because I think we all are basically saying we need to try to get moving on this as quick as we can.
So, and just to clarify, there were some of the smaller jurisdictions that sued and were part of this, as we did in the very beginning, as did the city of Cincinnati. And I've been looking for that list from the prosecutor's office so that we can hone in a little bit on those most impacted. So, I totally agree with you. So, we're waiting on that list from the prosecutor's office to see who those jurisdictions are because I don't have that at my fingertips either. But, well, maybe, Madam President, maybe it is a good idea then to do a more generalized resolution first, and then we'll fill in as we go, knowing that we have a timeframe there, and it has to be done within a week or so.
Okay. We could do that on Thursday. Okay. We can put that on agenda for Thursday. And then the QRT Task Force that is focusing on black males that are experiencing that, there was a specific neighborhood that they were addressing, and we can look at those zip codes, too.
Well, it was Walnut Hills primarily. Yeah. And the other one was Price Hill.
Price Hill. Okay. Jeff, will you get my, okay. All right. So, we'll put this on for Thursday. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.